Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regular board meeting of the Town of Reinbeck for tonight, the 27th of November. Would everybody please stand? Do we have any announcements? We do need another board member for the Ethics. It can be anybody except someone enrolled in the Democratic Party. Any other... or, I mean, we'll be doing a list, which I'll try and have ready for the meeting next year, what else we need to fill out committees in the new year. But Ethics, we could use another member sooner rather than later. Does anybody else have any announcements? Town Hall will be closed early on February 8th... oh, sorry, for December 8th, Friday, December 8th, for our holiday, joint holiday party with the village. The town and village are having a joint holiday party to thank our committee members and volunteers. That would be nice. Anybody else? Are there any committee or liaison reports? You could always come back if somebody thinks of something. We have a presentation tonight from Suzanne McKelley of the Cemetery Committee on Revised Cemetery Rules and Regulations. Thanks, Suzanne.
Yes, I'll keep this brief. So, we've been working on revising the rules and regulations. We last revised them, I mean, four years ago. So, we thought it was time to have them again. So, here they are. I thought maybe... you probably haven't had time to look at them. But I was hoping that by the next meeting, maybe we could have a resolution to pass them. So, that's it.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
And I know you work closely with Gary, but we had an issue, or a couple of issues this year, where people put bricks around, do special plantings, and they put other... personalize the grave sites, and it becomes an issue if Gary has to dig a grave in front or in back.
Right.
And we don't have the labor to restore it.
Right.
Is that addressed in here?
It's not. You know, the... we can... you might want to think about that.
Well, you need to think of, you know, because you're...
Yeah. I mean, I talked to Gary that he, you know, he's okay. The way the rules and regulations work right now is that folks can put plantings or anything within 18 inches of the front of the grave. And so, we do permit that right now. It just seems that in the cases of where there are payers or things that are in the way, sometimes he has to move things, and then he doesn't have to put them back. So, we're sort of in a situation where we either permit nothing, or we just have situations where, you know, he has to move things and he doesn't put them back. So, we might want to consider putting something in there that says that caretaker has to move something, then the clutterler is responsible for restoring it, or something like that.
And just one other thing is that it says here, "Plantings of annials and perennials are permitted between monuments or grave markers only when a plot owner owns adjoining plots." Doesn't this make maintenance difficult again?
It doesn't. We've passed that by Gary, and he sort of... that's how it is right now. That's why I asked him. I'm like, "Well, so why are there plants between, you know, these two graves?" He said, "That's because these are family plots, and it doesn't have to maintain between them."
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And holiday reads April 15th. You think that's... seems late to me.
We had it May 15th before, so I pushed it. We could change it. Yeah.
All right, so I guess we'll all be timed to go through this and get any... I'll reach out to Suzanne or Gary if anybody has any questions.
One of the things about these rules and regulations, I made a few of these. Some of the things I've seen, like, they're more policy, they're rules and regulations. I've been trying to think about these as rules and regulations for the public. And some of them reflect kind of a rule, a regulation for the caretaker. So, maybe you could think about that as you're looking through them. And that's some of the ones that we kind of got rid of. We've been getting... we got rid of last time as well.
Like what?
Trying to remember now. I think there was... is it the last one on here? Behind the last page.
It's okay. I just thought of a few.
Oh, "In the natural burial ground, there shall be a 50-foot perimeter buffer zone." Well, that's true for the entree cemetery. It doesn't seem like that needs to be in our rules and regulations.
No, because that's...
Yeah. So, there were two or three that were like that. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
So, you want to... oh, you're the liaison, Ed's the liaison.
Yeah.
You'll make sure this isn't a resolution for the next meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that's any worrying around what you brought up to the Senate here.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Resolution 2017-232, acceptance of 2018 highway material bids. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thanks, Brennan. And may I have...
Sure.
Thanks, Alan. We tabled this last meeting because I hadn't gone over it. If anybody else had questions, but I'm satisfied now. Does anybody have questions or comments? This is no discussion. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So, moved. I will make a motion, if I may, for Resolution 2017-240 for our preliminary accounts table, abstracts, vouchers, 1,130 through 1,182. Checks totaling in the amount of $74,595.35. May I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ed. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So, moved. Resolution 2017-241 for the reappointment to the Board of Assessment Review of Stephen Jenkins. May I have a motion?
A motion.
Thank you, Chauncey. May I have a second? Thank you, Alan. Who's the liaison? Is it...
Chute.
That's me. I have not spoken to Steve.
He just walked in.
Okay, so, thank you, John. He's a great board member. Did I pick that up? It's not sloppy? Okay. I'm happy to do it with the assessors, but, okay.
I don't want to keep it, so I think that...
It's a good board.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Is that a complete board? Do we need another member, or... We'll look at that.
It is complete.
It is complete now. Okay. Okay, that's right. It's...
It's...
The terms expire mid-year, not end of year, so for... Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So, moved. Resolution 2017-242 for the appointment to the Recreation Advisory Committee. May I have a motion?
I may have a motion.
Thank you, Ed. May I have a second? Second. Thank you, Alan. Alan, this is your committee. Anything? Tammy Valentino.
No, it's just the people in the committee like her, and...
And I know her.
Yes. Nice application.
It's a pretty, a little more diverse one, shall we say.
Okay, good. Another Rec. Committee member. Thanks for volunteering, attending. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So, moved. I'll make a motion for Resolution 2017-243 for our zoning fee refund. May I have a second?
Sure.
Thank you. This is for Jody and Liam Dooley, who should have never been charged or never been tasked with going out to getting a site plan for the application of putting a deck on their house. So, I thank you guys for agreeing to refund me the money that they should have never had to have spent. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So, moved. Resolution 2017-244, reissue of request for proposal to replace the town hall meat electrical panel and rejection of the single sealed bid received. May I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Thank you, Ed, and a second.
Sure.
Thank you, Chauncey. Ed, this is your...
Yeah, there was an error in bidding process. We had received one sealed bid. They shouldn't have been sealed to begin with. There should have been pre-written bids from different people, appraisers, and we didn't get it in that form, so we're redoing it. I contacted five or six appraisers now, so we should get by December 4th to have a lot of the bids in, get it to our engineer by December the 8th, and we'll pass it hopefully on the 11th.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So, moved. Resolution 2017-245 for the intermunicipal agreement with the village of Reinbeck, transferring two used trucks in exchange for a partial interest in certain highway equipment, which is the skid steer. We have a motion.
To do what?
On the floor for discussion.
Oh, all right.
Thank you, Chauncey. Thank you, Alan. We have to get it on the floor before we discuss.
I see, all right.
Chauncey, you want to spearhead this, or...
Sure. The proposal is that we swap a couple of vehicles to the village and receive in return a 25% interest in a piece of equipment called a Bobcat. The arrhythmic is faulty or something because we would be, according to the draft of the agreement that we have, we would be passing on to the village vehicles worth $17,125 and getting a 25% interest worth $12,750 from the Bobcat, which means that somehow or another we've lost $4,375. I think that has to be fixed.
But what's the difference between having a 25% interest and having a 40% interest in terms of getting to use it?
There are at least, well, the use is supposed to be worked out between the highway people. But the problem, beyond the fact that it's ridiculous to have numbers in an agreement that don't work, there are a couple of other issues. One is that if repairs are needed and to be made by an outside, a third party, the expense of the repair is shared in accordance with the proportionate interest in the equipment. And if we've got a 25% interest, we...
It's better than your...
It should be a lower percentage, I suppose. And if it's sold, we get 25%, and again, we've not gotten the money, so it has to be examined. And from the lawyer's point of view, aside from the business issues, I think there are quite a few things that need to be addressed, and I think we have to ask Warren to take over.
See, so here's my question. The fact that it's 25%, does that say versus 50? Would that mean we get it one quarter of the time rather than...
Can I throw some light on? I think that the amounts in here for the trucks are inflated. They're not blue book. I think if we had gone out to bid, we would have received several thousand dollars. So, we can certainly kick this back to Barry and Bob Wyatt and ask for blue book value on it. And I agree with Chauncey that we should send Warren to just have him find you. I'm not troubled by... I understand Chauncey's point. It should be precise, but I think that what's here as the value for the 207 and the 202 are inflated.
Come back to your question, Alan, if I may, before you ask the next question. The village highway foreman and the town superintendent of highways shall collectively make decisions relating to the scheduled usage and storage of the equipment. So, we're relying on those two people to sort of work it out on a day-by-day basis. I can live with that, if everybody else can. But beyond that, there are real... it's a mess from a lawyer's point of view.
Needs to be...
It needs to be straightened out.
There's a couple of loose...
I mean, I'd be more comfortable if there was some protocol to resolve the scheduling issue.
You know, yes, it's one of many. If I wanted to, I could give you a 50-point memo. I don't think you want that. I think we ask more than they...
And let's just also say that this is nothing that doesn't go on anyway. We're constantly sharing, borrowing, loaning equipment to not only the village, but other departments. But when, you know, over the past couple of years with county grants, we purchased more than half a dozen pieces of equipment. So, it can be done successfully. There are rarely issues, but I agree we should kick it to Warren. So, should we table this and kick it to Warren for tightening up? John, thank... hey, thanks. We're going to table this, John. Will you refer to Warren for us? Thank you. Is there any new business? Is that what I had to talk about? I can't remember. The grant? That's a discussion item. Okay. First is town book Facebook page and communications. In the next week or two, we'll have a town and Reinbeck Facebook page that will be maintained by the clerks, and all of us can be on as editors. And Elaine will be posting pieces that she writes to talk about whatever projects we're working on. Any committee can have access to it if they give whatever information or story they want to their liaison. And it's a way for us to get out more information to our residents. So, we'll be giving you guys editing protocol and just, you know, we can use it as such, an official town Facebook page for town business happenings, things that we're working on. Building permit amnesty. So, we are reading for our RFP for the town wide evaluation reassessment. And if we proceed with it, it's a perfect time to do an amnesty program for residents who might have done building or building projects without permits. We had an initial meeting with myself, our acting zoning administrator, our building administrator, our clerk for the building department, with the mayor, with the village's building enforcement officer, and with the assessor's office. And we all agree that this is something the village wants to participate in it as well. We realize that there will be more work, but now we're looking at what the parameters could be. It'll be January to June, come in, get the permits that you need at the fees as they are now, and by then we'll have passed our new fee schedule. Get current, get it documented, and then the amnesty program will be over, and we will have some recommended fees, not fines, because we don't want to necessarily take these to court. Fees where if you're found during the revaluation process to have, as they found in the last go-round, built a house in the woods without a permanent permit, it'll be a pretty steep fee. And that's something we can talk on, talk about, and we'll have to pass as a board. But, you know, that's where we are, we're at a meeting. Brennan's going to join the committee as liaison to the zoning and building departments, and we'll push that forward. But everyone was in agreement. Proposed zoning law amendments. I think that's you, acting zoning administrator.
Yeah. I think we discussed this before. What we're trying to do is basically address what I call ministerial issue. We're not talking like Airbnb, we're not talking like any policy the town board has to make to terminate zoning. We're basically talking about things that over the last few years have caused problems downstairs, perhaps because we weren't as explicit in the zoning law as particularly we wanted to be, as what we wanted to have happen when interpretation would be made. So, Art Grove has provided, I think you have a copy of it, a working draft of...
Didn't it go to the whole town board?
I think it just went to you and me and Melody.
Okay.
If you want, I can just run through it a little bit quickly.
Sure.
I can highlight all the good stuff.
Sure.
It's all good stuff.
I apologize. I thought it went to the whole board. It came over the Thanksgiving weekend.
But anyway, going through basically, first of all, our subdivision of land 101 check and 101 of the town code, what we're proposing to do is take lock consolidation out of subdivision. Right now, if you're going to join two or more lots together, you have to go through the whole subdivision process, which would take two, three months, and of course, you're paying all the fees for it. Or it's legally under agreement, you just go down and tell the assessor's office, this is what I'm going to do. You get a consolidation being written up, and you just go down to the county clerk's office, and it's done. There's really no reason for you to go through this whole process.
To consult...
To join lots together. They're not creating anything new. They're not... they're basically taking away, you know, potential housing sites, potential development, whatever specific purpose it is. There's no reason that you have to go through that. So, that's one of the things. We're also talking about, in terms of zoning districts. What we feel is important is that one thing that's been happening, and I think you've been maybe made aware of this before, is they don't know zoning law in terms of setback requirements. I think the intent was that existing structures, particularly in the upzoning of everything, from one acre to 10 acres and things like that. Obviously, most of the houses and properties in the town of Reinbeck are probably none of the former now. And I think the intent was that the structures as they currently exist would be grandfathered. In other words, if you're going to put a porch on the back of your house, but you don't meet the front side and rear setbacks, the only setback you might have to get a variance for would be for the rear setback if it doesn't meet the current setback in the district that you're in. For a while, what was happening is that people coming in to put that back in the back of their house were being required to bring their entire structure up to code with the current setbacks. And for each variance, there's a fee involved, even if the review process and approval process by the ZBA runs concurrent for all of us, we're paying a fee for each one. So, we're proposing that as things currently exist, they're grandfathered. The only time you would need to get an area variance is if a structure that you're wishing to put on your house or accessory structure or something like that doesn't meet the setback debt, and that alone would be required to get variance. We had instances where if you want to put a porch on the back of your house, and I think this is kind of what happened...
And we kind of... yeah.
What you just had. The house, let's say, didn't meet the setback, but the house maybe wasn't going to be touched, but the porch wasn't going to be too close to the front setback, even though it's in the back of the house. So, if variance was being required, which makes actually no sense whatsoever.
The only thing they could have done is moved the house back.
Or taken the house down, and of course, you have to get variance. And obviously, that was not the intent of the town board. So, we're grandfathering this, and we'll do that again. We hope no one will do it again. We're also hoping that under... another thing that was not, that we feel is very important, because every now and then, these things do come up. We require in many places people to go for special use for their site plan if they're in certain districts, things like that, to do anything within the ramp line in your house and steps, things like that. We feel very strongly that under ADA requirements, things like that, medical things, people shouldn't have to go through that. Very often, people, if they're coming out of a hospital, things like that, they either require special access into their homes, they require... We had one person who was quite ill, required a generator.
Immediately.
Put through the whole process to put a generator in, when they should have just been able to put it in so they could come home.
To breathe.
So, they would have the power.
Right.
So, we're going to change that. We're going to have something in here now that there is an ability to waive requirements for planning board approval for things that actually deal with ADA requirements for people so they can go back to their homes, things of that sort. We're going to modify that.
Sorry, Stephen.
That's quite all right. Where was I? We're modifying, as many of you know, had questions with people with fences and things like that, and the issues with that result, and people often having to go through quite a deal with that. What we're going to ask is that fences shall be located on private property, a suitable distance back for snow removal, and sufficient room for winter time snow. Shall not be subject to 15-foot setback, because in Reinbeck, for example, that could leave your front doors open. So, we really need to change that. In the case of fire operations, folks have to accept an integral part of the overall site plan for development of a site, no fence, gate, or wall that fully meets the requirements of the section. And if you look at our zoning law in detail, discussing how big they can be, what type they can be, whether they're made up, the whole nine yards. If you meet those specific requirements, you don't have to go to planning board discretion, which is quite well approved, and that's for all districts. This particularly would apply in Reinbeck. There are people who are having to go through the whole process and review just to put a fence that anywhere else in the town of Reinbeck they couldn't be really installed in the property with a building permit with a fence. So, we'd like to take that away. Under preservation of natural and cultural features, we think we need to be specific, that routine wooden maintenance for even dead diseased or damaged trees and invasive species does not have to come before the planning board, or to a flooding or anything like that. That's just...
Especially with our LWRPA, where it's very stringent.
Yeah. So, we don't think that's necessary. Under generators, we're not going to consider them structures or accessory structures.
And you're sure this is going, this is our third go-around with generators?
No. When I went downstairs and started working down there, because the way our zoning law is written, you can pretty much interpret it any way you want to. So, I interpreted it that generators basically are exempt just the way wires, poles, and things are, because they're basically an extension directional system and a range of use. So, all of a sudden, we got about seven or eight generator permits out in two days, which if...
It's a miracle. It's part of the big clog.
But, yeah, it was... it just wasn't fair.
So, this is going to fix the generator activity, which we thought we had fixed a year ago?
Oh, this will really fix it.
Now, we'll fix something.
Okay. Under application procedures, what we'd like to do is basically, we're requiring what's called sketch plan for a site plan review, things of that sort. Basically, the first step is a pre-application protocol. You need advice chip for the planning board and Art Grove. You go through everything to the applicant, what they need to do. And the sketch plan basically is for the whole planning board basically doing the same thing. So, you can add an extra month or more to someone's, you know, ordeal going before the process, plus several more fees in that. We'd like to eliminate sketch plan. Just go right from pre-application, right to you get your application together, it's still have to go through the zoning enforcement, all sort of insurance, the basic zoning requirements for the district that the project is proposed in. But you cut time out, you cut expense that really isn't necessary. We've been sort of trying to kind of do that anyway, and it's very awkward. So, we really need to legalize that. It doesn't serve a purpose. It does serve a purpose under the subdivision regulations. This is just for site plan, special use permit, zoning law. Under subdivision regulations, it's much more complicated. You really need to sit down with your planning board in a sketch plan situation before you're really in a position to put your application together for what your subdivision is trying to do. So, that is preserved for subdivision, but we'd like to take it out of site plan and special use permit. The other thing is that we're putting back into the zoning law under both site plan and sketch and site plan and special use permit. For some reason, general code took out the whole process of public notification.
This is for the zoning...
No, no, no. This is actually to go back in the zoning law for the planning board.
For the zoning... oh, for the planning board.
Right, because general code deleted all of that. We just want it put back, and that same language we would not...
It was inadvertently deleted?
I hope it was inadvertently, yeah. But it was wrong. But we do want to do the ZBA. The ZBA is requiring a clerk to do all the notification. It's a very long tedious process. What we are proposing is that the ZBA follows the same process the planning board follows.
The applicant's required to do it under the...
Under the guidance of the clerk, who provides them with the addresses for the, you know, many, many addresses. I believe for the ZBA, it may be under state law that the ZBA clerk is responsible for informing the town's official newspaper.
We'll follow the law, but we want to simplify. We want the applicant to take on some of the work.
Yeah, the rest is not under state law, and therefore, we feel that's... It's a good use of the clerk's time not to do that, because there's so many other things there to follow down there.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and the certificate of use. Certificate of use is something that came into the 2009 zoning law. Basically, as I always understood it, it was to take the site plan, because they had to get a site plan and approval for site plan for whatever your project is. And the certificate of use was for the zoning enforcement officers then go out and make sure that all the improvements, you know, stormwater, drainage, parking, landscaping, everything that the planning board approved actually was done according to plan by the project sponsor before the certificate of use can be issued, which then allows the certificate of occupancy to be issued. We feel very strongly that certificate of use really isn't necessary for single-family residents. You know, you have building permit, you're not really, basically, you're going to be doing a whole lot of other things on that property anyway. So, we'd like to sort of delete the certificate of use from single-family residences. If you do need a site plan and special use permit for other projects, large residential developments, commercial developments like the medical building, or your bank, wouldn't happen, and things of that sort, the garden center, that's okay, so you still want a certificate of use because you have significant site improvements that you want to ensure are properly installed. Under zoning law, we've already discussed that, making sure that the notification process is the same as it is for the planning board. And there's a lot of smiles down there doing that. People are very happy.
Very happy.
Going through definitions, you'll read about accessory structures. That's where generators is popping up as a structure. You'll see that for non-emergency use, generators will no longer be considered... For non-emergency use, a generator will still be... be considered as a structure.
That would be inconsistency.
Right. But for emergency use, which is what people are putting the name for at their homes, it will no longer be considered an accessory structure. Under clear cutting, some of the land we're trying to whittle will be removal of dead or damaged trees, or the routine maintenance of woodland areas, following the town included guidelines as adopted by the conservation advisory board, or removal of trees in accordance with a subdivision type of site plan approved by the town and by the planning board. I think that the CAB probably being in good position, almost every reference we have in our zoning law to tree removal deals with silver culture or our forestry, which basically is a commercial process of growing trees, you know, to basically cut them down for commercial reasons. We don't address just your homeowners or your people who maintain woodlands, natural areas, things like that, and the things they need to do. And very often, people have been forced, in the last few years, to come in, to get a permit of some sort before they get to take a tree down, and that's just, you know, that's ridiculous. So we would like to clear that up. We've also tried to redefine setbacks and yards, so there will no longer be this issue of grandfathered structures suddenly have been required to meet new requirements, the new setbacks. Or if you're putting in a porch behind your house, you may be not performing with the house, the porch may be too close to the street, but since the house is there, you're not tearing it down, you don't need a variance to put the porch out. We're just, we're just.
Common sense, simplification.
Usually the intent, I'm sure, of the town board, but it wasn't put into writing, and it's extremely easy to make a logical argument of almost any interpretation in law in the zoning law.
The other thing I want to say, if any of our residents have issues or concerns, we'd like to hear about it, because the sooner we know about it, the quicker we can address it, because it's not, I'll speak for the board, and you guys can contradict, it's not our intention to make this difficult. We certainly want people to adhere to the law, and we want it to be user-friendly, and we don't want to drive people nuts. So if there's an issue, like if you feel that you're being asked to do something that doesn't make sense, we want to know about it and fix it.
And there are two more very important definitions that are never made into our zoning law, but need to be there, under definition. Repair, work exclusively involving the normal maintenance and repair of damaged trees, or deterioration of a structure, or other property impermanence, and which falls short of alteration as defined herein. We do have a definition of alterations, and that is in here. Repair may or may not require a building permit, but shall not require either a special use permit or site plan approval in any zoning district, including the several overlay districts, including Ryanville, established in Article Two of this chapter. And Ryanville feels to fix their house, just to, you know, damage something like that, means right or whatever, a tree down, you just repair it back in the condition it was in, they were having to go through the whole special use permit, site plan review process, it doesn't make sense. Which brings us to, the last thing we have here is replacement, which is another definition we're now proposing to have. Work exclusively involving replacement of existing exterior building features such as windows, doors, and architectural components, that replicate those existing building features, and which falls short of alteration as defined herein. Replacement in there may not require a building permit, but shall not require either special use permit or site plan approval in any zoning district, including several overlay districts established in Article Two.
Including historic overlay districts?
Yes. Now, what still happens is, any building permit still has to go to the ZEO to take a look at. And what we've done with sign permits is, you apply to zoning enforcement office for a sign permit. What he or she then does is sends it to the planning board, and just to look at, to see if it meets the basic sign design guidelines, and we say yes or no, and then we send it back to them. We may want to develop something just like that, so that if someone, and I think what Art is proposing, and I think this may be the way to do it, if they go to a pre-application conference, we can, and we've done this in a number of cases, perhaps not necessarily that we should have, telling people, you're just replacing your windows, it's the same size, the same aperture, the same, you know, grill work and everything, you don't need to go through the whole thing. If we have a historic structures committee, which I hope we will have sometime, possibly when we have it for historic, for these things like that, just looking for replacement or repair, we just give it to that committee to look at, and then they could recommend to the, to the building inspector, yes, this is fine, building permit. But we really need to recognize, there's so much going on, just to maintain a home, to take care of it, you may want to put energy-saving windows in there, maybe, a lot of things like that you'd like to do, that will not in any way diminish, you know, the value or the aesthetic appeal of the building, but you shouldn't have to go through the whole process if you're putting a new addition to something like that in a historic structure, which then you do have to go through the whole process, and that's politically appropriate. So that's what we're proposing here. I don't think there's anything really policy laden here, I think it's just things, but I think was the intent of the town board all along, they tested the zoning law, there's just a lack of articulation perhaps, to ensure that the CEO, whoever hears.
Contradict, contradictory language.
We'll leave that to, yeah.
So, thank you.
That's what we're going with, and that's what Art's put together.
Guys, I just forwarded it to you, I forwarded it to, it came in this morning, I didn't realize it didn't go to everybody, but.
I think it's important to say that, that these clarifications are meant to speed up a lot of the processes downstairs, and also to.
Simplify.
And well, right, and to also take some of the burden off the boards, because like the ZBA was seeing things that might not come before it, with like, with the pre-existing non-conforming structures, and so that, you know, that also conserves people's energies and efforts.
Any questions?
Not for me.
Thank you for that.
I referred it to Warren, which I'm assuming everybody wants to do.
Yes.
And we'll have Warren look at it, and we'll commence the local law adoption process to amend our zoning.
Thank you so much.
It only goes in the basement, I think.
Thank you, Michael. So you guys, you do have it now, and again, I apologize, and so I went to everyone, John, I sent it to you too. Will you follow just now? Will you follow up with Warren and make sure, tomorrow, make sure he knows that we want him to look at this, so we can start the process? Next, the discussion item is zoning department staffing.
So I sent everybody an email on the board, summarizing the meetings that Ed and I have had. We've had two with Michael Trimble, our acting zoning administrator, and the village, specifically with John Fenton, their zoning enforcement officer, and zoning administrator, and building inspector. He wears many hats at the village. And I think the takeaway, one of the pieces that we were waiting for was, as Michael went through things that had gotten backed up downstairs, to get his sense of how much time, once the desk was cleared, how much time it would take for a zoning administrator to properly perform their duties in an efficient and responsive manner to the public. And then we, so, the takeaway from that is that Michael's recommending that someone be hired, not as we had originally budgeted, a full-time person, but he feels quite strongly that a, and correct me if I'm wrong, but he feels quite strongly that a part-time person who would keep regular hours, that's another really important piece of this, from nine to one every day, should be able to keep up with the workflow, and do a good job of keeping up with the workflow. And, and part of the reason he also feels that way, and I agree, and I think Ed agrees as well, is that with our decision to separate zoning enforcement officer into another position, that takes a lot of, it transfers a lot of the work that's been in one position into another. So the main thing that we were exploring with the village was whether we would be interested in sharing services with them, because John Fenton is, is quite an outstanding employee over at the village, and somebody that we'd like to sort of replicate over here.
He's an ace enforcement officer.
Yes, anyone who deals with him feels the same, I guess unless he's writing a ticket. So we spoke with John, and with other members of the village board, and Gary, about whether we could combine, and our final conclusion is really no, because John is doing so much over at the village, that for him to try and take on our zoning administrator, and all the hats would be too much for him. But, John already also, I don't know, freelances? It's not freelancing. John already also handles.
He's a part-time zoning administrator.
For Tivoli. And he has a lot of really good procedures and paperwork in place. He does a lot of this in the evenings for Tivoli. He has a set day when he visits Tivoli, but he does a lot of it remotely. And he feels very confidently that he could handle our enforcement needs the same way. And one of the other things that's attractive about John doing it is that, and you're going to have to forgive me, because I can't tell you, but he has the authority from Dutchess County. Who gave him that authority?
It's a prosecutorial authority.
Right, it's prosecutorial. Anyway, he can prosecute tickets himself, which means that he writes them, he takes them to court, and unless the defendant's lawyer's up, then he can sort of see it through to its conclusion. If, if the.
So is that, would that be in lieu of us having to work with a special prosecutor?
Well, no.
I think we'd still need Kerry for times when people do have lawyers. And in some sense, you know, I don't, maybe it's part of a larger discussion, but I think also that, that we may, with an active zoning enforcement officer, have more enforcement going on. I mean, I think that that's one of the things we thought was really being neglected. So I'm hoping that if he, even if he's taking over prosecuting, you know, taking them to court initially, I suspect that Kerry will have plenty of activity on the other end of it.
But we're talking overall about, we budgeted for a full-time code-enforced zoning officer, and we budgeted for a part-time.
Zoning enforcement officer.
Or deputy, a deputy. Who prosecutes. So now, after things are cleared up, the recommendation is maybe to start with a part-time administrator and a part-time prosecutor?
Yes.
Yes.
And see how that goes.
Yes, in fact, we would, what, what Ed and Michael and I are recommending to the board is that, even as Michael continues to act as the zoning administrator, acting zoning administrator, we could perhaps consider moving forward with John Fenton, and thinking about what kind of compensation would be appropriate. To get, to get the enforcement going right away. I don't think there's any reason to delay. We also have a couple of names of people that we'd like to contact.
So, just to interrupt, I already contacted civil service, and we do, we are qualified for a full-time zoning enforcement officer, we are already qualified for a part-time, I need to check and make sure we're on the books for a part-time zoning enforcement officer, correct?
Yes. Although I don't know whether he, does it matter, would it matter to John if he just called the deputy? What do we need to do about titling it?
It's me, it's Shelly, it's civil service.
Okay, okay.
Since these are part-time positions, we may not need civil service, I don't think so.
Well, they have to be informed.
Okay.
I have to call civil service, whatever. They have to make sure it's exempt, non-exempt, and, you know, they qualify us.
The final update is that, the final update also is that, if you remember, we also budgeted for a clerk to work with the zoning administrator. Michael is handling the paperwork just fine on his own, and the maintaining of the files. In fact, a lot of things were done in the last year, in, as, as, as everyone was trying to address the, some of the trouble we were having downstairs, and simplified some of the forms that the zoning administrator uses to make determinations, to convey those determinations to other people. And so Michael's finding that he's doing fine, working without an administrator or a clerk, and the rest of the support staff downstairs also feels that it would be great to try not adding another person downstairs until we are a hundred percent sure, because they, they're a pretty tightly efficient bunch down there, and I think their concern is, you know, that if you throw someone else in there, it may throw things off in a way that's not necessary.
So really, the recommendation is to start with a twenty-hour-a-week zoning administrator, what we had before, add a fifteen to twenty-hour-a-week enforcement officer, or as needed, probably more now, up to twenty hours a week, hold off on the secretary.
Yep.
Do you want me to get that straight with civil service? Is that what the board wants to do? Chauncey Allen?
Yes.
Yeah, you know, I think we budgeted generously, because we, we wanted to make sure we had every available tool to, to straighten things out, but I think that we've discovered that some of the things that Michael's been able to address, and these zoning amendments, et cetera, et cetera, will, will change the workflow. Yes.
What we're going to want to do is do a very succinct job description for the zoning administrator, do the interpretations, do the reviews of applications, they'll be the basic, they'll be sitting down there, available to the public to answer questions, to be there. That was one of the biggest problems, there was no one down there to answer questions, come down and help me. But we did want to very clearly articulate that role. And the zoning enforcement officer, their function would be to basically follow up on violations, and they're going to work with the zoning administrator, obviously, to determine violations from whatever.
Is this something you could help us with, the job description?
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know.
Will you guys work on that, the three of you?
We can get that done. I think part of the reason we thought we needed a full-time person and assistant, is you looked at the, things weren't going through, some year, two years, things were sinking, they were not moving, things of that sort. And when you looked at the officer line, it was intimidating, I mean, you know, there was, you know.
This is, listen.
It was terrifying.
It was physical, it was all involved.
We have the money and the budget, this is a more conservative.
I think this will work.
Let's try it, if, if, if we're not, you know, skating clear by the summer, we'll ramp up again.
You can always change.
Right, we're not giving up our ability to do it.
But I'd like to get these people hired as soon as.
I'd love to do that.
That's a very good idea.
Thank you, thank you. Everybody okay with this?
Yes.
So are we writing the job description, and we're working with the village, and the village is zoning enforcement officer?
Yes, and how do we, since I'm new to this, how do we, as a board, determine the, or is the rate of pay already determined for the zoning enforcement officer?
We have to look at what's in our budget, we have to break it down in hourly rate.
Okay, so I can work with you on that, and then we can.
And Shelly, and then we'll have to approve it in a salary schedule. Yeah, great, so let's get the, work on that this week, next week, we'll get the job descriptions out and start the process. Thank you, I mean, it's a happy area down there, and functioning is.
It's a terrific area to work in, the people down there are phenomenal.
Yes, they are.
The way they, what they put up with, and the good nature that they have, kept as far as, you know, the public is concerned, is remarkable.
Yes.
People are happy down there, happy now, and refer to, they think if you hand in more forms, fill up the bill, and you hand in permits, and they think, you know, Christmas came early.
I think a lot of us have received those compliments, we're hearing a lot of good things.
Sadly, I've gotten a barrage of compliments, which makes me realize how.
Difficult things down there.
And it really is now, and it's, it's a good, it's a good place to work, and it helps everyone else, I mean, it's amazing how much.
Don't you want to stay? You want to stay down there?
No.
There's a coffee machine.
Thank you, Michael, again.
I'm glad I could do it.
We appreciate it.
So much.
Moving on here, emergency management coordinator job description. Have you guys, I recorded that to you a meeting a little ago, I want to go ahead with this. The only thing I want to change, I don't know how you feel, I feel strongly that we shouldn't make it a paid position at this time, not that I'm against it, but as I said before, with the planning board, we have, the zoning board of appeals that we have, it's unpaid. I'd rather work with the village to find the emergency coordinator, again, it's the position that Henry Campbell held, and Henry was an amazingly knowledgeable and dedicated volunteer, we will never be able to replace Henry, but we have to get a new coordinator. I'd rather find someone with Gary, appoint the person, and have the person work with us to define exactly what we need to do. So if that's all with you guys, I'll work with Gary and pick this out. Anybody who's interested and has any background in emergency services, law enforcement, you know, community, emergency coordination. know, community emergency coordination?
We'll be across the town.
Yeah, we'll be appointing together and working on this together. Okay, terrific, that's good. One thing that we had mentioned, and I just wanted to bring this up for public discussion, next year we've talked about the possibility of starting our town board meetings earlier. And the only reason, a good one being that our town attorney will be available to us with more regularity. He has other boards, town zoning that he works with, and if we were to go to, say, a six o'clock meeting, it would ensure that we could have attorney-client meetings before then, and have him attend our meetings if need be, from six until seven. And we'd just be mindful of scheduling public hearings, starting a little later, so that people wouldn't miss it. But I just wanted to put that out in case the public has any comment, or anyone wants to weigh in. We're thinking about changing our town board meetings to six o'clock in 2018, so please let us know what you think.
I have one more discussion. Paula Trimble brought to my attention that there is a local government records management improvement fund that awards grants to municipalities for file management and document conversion and access. Rhinebeck looks like it could qualify for an individual grant of up to $75,000, or if we did a shared grant with the village, and I have not spoken with them at all about this, looks like it might be up to $150,000. I know everyone here probably has a lot more experience than I do currently in applying for grants, but Paula had suggested that I meet with Alicia Marsonkowski, who is a grant writer based in Sagerties. So I did that this morning. She has worked with the Morton Library, she has worked with the Phoenisha Festival of the Voice, and secured a good grant for them, it was a $95,000 grant. And she worked with the Woodstock Chamber Orchestra, although their grant was not successful, their application. So she charged us $75 an hour, and estimated that to work up a grant proposal of the type that Paula and I were talking about would take between $3,000 and $5,000. And I responded by saying, is there legwork we could do on our end that would reduce the fee? And she said, yes, definitely, you know, collecting sort of technical stuff from the I'm still not sure that the board wants to pursue something like that, but it was interesting for me, meeting with her, because she had a lot of ideas about how to expand. Paula had identified, Paula's thought was that we should at least apply for money to help us enter data from 1974 to 1999 of our building permits into municipalities.
74 to 99?
Yes. 74 to 1999. There are 2,045 building department records. But Paula estimates, let's see here, Paula estimates, she looked again today, oh, excuse me, now she's saying 72 to 99. 3,000 building permits need 333 hours to enter, at $13 per hour, that would just be $4,300 for entering it.
And why do we want it entered?
Because when, and feel free to chime in, but you know, when somebody comes to the zoning enforcement, or the zoning administrator, the building officer, to make a request or to identify what they're gonna be doing, this would allow them with just a couple of clicks to pull up the entire file.
So this is populating municipality?
Yes.
It's really entering all of the paper we have into municipality.
Get rid of the paper.
Well, and so this led to a conversation of saying, well, you know, if we were hiring a grant writer, anywhere in this range at all, it'd be crazy to only do it for this. But then we started to, you know, we're sitting there with all of the planning department files. I mean, there are so many files that we could...
Have you been to the highway department yet?
Oh, yeah, I did that when I was a clerk, I know. So I guess what I'm asking is, would there be interest in us? What I would like to do, if there is some interest in this, is to ask for authorization to meet with or hire Alicia for two or three hours to go through this in a lot more detail, prepare a presentation to the board of exactly how flushed out we could make it. It's due January 12th. And one of the other things I could explore with her, and I didn't get into it today, is, you know, working for a municipality, maybe she'd negotiate a reduced rate, I don't know.
So my one, and I think this is great, I'm all for grants, and the biggest issue with grants, when we write them and administer them, is that it takes a ton and ton. I just think $75 an hour is, it's like what we pay a senior engineer, you know, we don't pay, like, we pay our municipal attorneys.
So maybe we could give some thought to...
And I'm thinking like what people I know who work at Bard College may be nowhere near that.
No, that's fine, I mean, and this may not be the person, but you know, she, I was trying to identify some of the things that she might bring to the table that, Lisa, certainly aren't my strengths, interpretation of government speak in terms of understanding what they're actually asking us for. You, I mean, you've done...
Well, there's a factor, you have to, that's, that hinges on this, you ought to know about. We got a $40,000 grant from the county to hire a consultant from Pace University to go through the planning, building...
Processes, right?
Well, one part of that was to rationalize the file structure, because each of those street departments has a different filing scheme. Two of them are on computers, but they're different, and one of them's paper, and that really needs to be rationalized, and it's a technical problem. How do you create a data structure that satisfies everybody? Clerk's office has a similar issue. I mean, it's not, it isn't related to that, but it's similar.
No, anything that's dealing with...
So, and that, you know, to design a data structure that satisfies all that is a fairly complex technical problem. It's not...
So do you think it's not the time, then, to try to start combing through the old stuff until we know how we're going forward?
Yes, I mean, why put stuff into a, into a computer if you don't know how you're gonna put it on? And that ought, you know, you ought to have, we ought to have a file structure. Not that that's a big problem to solve, but it just...
No, but it may be a matter of timing, and it may just be that this grant in January of this year is not happening for us. And maybe it'll be available the following year after...
Or we could get the grant and do them serially.
I mean, and also, like, I'm not intimidated, government speak, she can't be any more expert on government speak than, well, at least Ed, Alan, and I, you know, and from Michael Trimble and our clerks in the mix. We've written so many grants and...
So then maybe this is, maybe this is a grant that I should try to tackle.
Yeah, or we could do it, you know, let's look at it.
I wrote the grant request for the...
Wanna do this one?
Yeah.
They're not hard to do, it's, the hard thing is, is really getting them done, is getting, hiring people to do them and administering, you know, and, you know, our staff does a lot, we all do a lot, so I'll be happy to look at it with you. Let's bring it back at the next meeting, and if it makes sense...
Yeah, well, I'll tell them that we're just gonna sort of put that part of it on the back burner.
Seventy-five, I would say it's too rich for us.
But I would definitely like to work with you on seeing whether there is a way to try and pursue some of this money, even if it's not $75,000 worth of it.
If we're just going to do what Paula wants to do, to get 70, to start populating municipality, it's worthwhile, you know? I mean, we've been talking forever about needing to digitize and...
Well, I think even if with Alan's grant, we changed the way some of those things, I think the information Paula is most desiring to have in municipality would still be important.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Sounds good. Is there anybody else? Is there any other new business or public comments on any agenda or non-agenda items?
Grant writer info, just so you have it. I have it, I don't wanna take it home, I just say I edited it out.
We have any public comment on, I know you're here, I was just gonna say, okay, so we have our county legislator, Joel Tyner, here.
Happy holidays. Hello, happy holidays, everybody. My show on television is an 877-page document, the proposed county budget for 2018. And I do wanna give credit where credit is due, I want to thank publicly the county executive for adding $200,000 in his proposed budget for 2018, earmarked for Hudson Valley Mental Health, to help make sure that more doctors are able to prescribe Suboxone for medication-assisted therapy. This is actually something that my wife's given me quite a bit of education about, and she and I really ramped up public advocacy on this this summer, started petitions, and a lot of emails, went to the legislature, and so I'm glad that's happened. There are a number of holes in the county budget that's still concerning. About a year, year and a half ago, it was May of 2016, it was announced that the county budget surplus, the fund balance, was 57.1 million dollars, which is about triple what it was from 96 to 2012, before the sales tax was originally sharing, formal change. That was in May of last year. In May of this year, it was announced a $59.6 million budget surplus fund balance.
Fifty-nine?
59.6 million.
Joel, how much, how do we find out how much sales tax the town and village of Rhinebeck sent to the county?
You and I spoke about this, I reached out to the county budget director, and she said she was gonna get that to me. And also, I, a couple months ago, myself and a bunch of my friends, we sat through a presentation...
Who did you ask for that?
Jessica White, she's the budget director. Not as many as this person I'm working on, I'm pretty sure she's gonna send me an update of what she sent me before on that.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm curious to know, the amount of sales tax broken out of my municipality, how much does the town of Rhinebeck send, and how much does the village of Rhinebeck send in sales tax revenue to the county?
And, you know, we're living in a world, unfortunately, where there's whole, there's like, who can agree on the facts, because a friend of mine went through all the facts and figures from the New York State Comptroller's Office, and their numbers, I'm not gonna lie to you, are different from the Dutchess County official government numbers. According to the New York State Comptroller's Office, you know, Rhinebeck and Clinton's lost about half a million dollars over the last five years. City of Kipiti's lost 9.6 million.
But that's, that's true. I mean...
The, don't, don't get too upset when I forward you the numbers from the, because you've probably seen them over the years, they, they sort of, they don't, and I'm not blaming her, she just kinda has to do with the county's...
We know what you're talking about.
Tells her, they always, they always point out that we're doing so much more, and, you know, for all the municipalities, right?
A cut is a cut.
So as soon as I get that information, I will share it with you. But there is a line, there is a line in the budget for that. And the fact that the county budget surplus, the fund balance, is so massive, you know, again, from 1996 through 2012, the average money left over, again, each year, budget surplus fund balance was 20 million, and it's just totally ballooned over the last four, five years. The fact that, you know, over at the church on the edge of town, Route 308, Moial Luthur Church, with the county office for the agency, Senior Friendship Center, it's really eaten away at me for seven years, that we don't have a five-day week at the county office for the agency, Senior Friendship Center, not just at that one, but all over the county. And it's eaten away at me, we don't have an office of consumer affairs in Dutchess County government. I'm not a huge fan of Sues Serena at all, but I'll give her some credit. State Senator Sues Serena goes around doing these forums, you know, about consumer fraud and scams with seniors, and it's a big issue. I mean, me and my wife and my mom, just about everybody I know is getting, there's a lot of scams out there. We don't have a Dutchess County office of consumer affairs. It wouldn't break the bank to bring it back. It is, it is beyond the pale to me that that's part of the county budget, it would be maybe 100, 200,000 dollars out of basically a $60 million budget surplus. I've seen the county executive has this agency partnership grant program for the last several years. I'm glad that an extra 100 grand is being allocated for that, but still, half the requests from nonprofits are being rejected. I'm talking about stuff as common sense as the Hudson Valley Boy Scout Council looking for 45 grand for an inner-city boy scout program. And it just doesn't make any sense to me to force those nonprofits to live in austerity. There's a very well-known resident of my town, Attala Clutton, who was livid over the household hazardous waste collection program in Dutchess County. They used to have six, seven, eight of them in a year, every year, all around, there are only one or two this year, and the most recent one was, it was insanity. People had to wait hours and hours, and it was really disorganized. And the explanation, when I asked this, because I'm on the budget personnel committee, was that there's, you know, funding cuts. Well, it doesn't make sense that there's funding cutbacks for household hazardous waste collection when the fund balance has tripled over the last five years. So there's a number of holes in the county budget. In addition to the fact, there's about 30, 40 people in the Dutchess County jail right now, who, out of about 400, who are just charged with criminal possession of a controlled substance, just nonviolent drug addicts, not drug dealing or drug selling, not aggressive abriance acts. And even the county executive to himself, to his credit, three years ago, said, we're not gonna do this, we're not gonna arrest in jail nonviolent drug addicts, and it just keeps on going on. And the DA does it, and the majority of the county legislature defends it. That, to me, is unacceptable. We're spending, it's $125 per day, per person, in the Dutchess County jail. Rebecca Edwards, to her credit, she's a new, a lot of county legislator, like she pointed out, you know, as much of a pain in the neck as I can be, she reminded me of something that Mickey Schulinski's pointed out, two years ago, the county executive's budget itself was less than half a million dollars. Now it's $947,000. He has added a lot of staff. And when so much, so many of the nonprofits and county departments have been decimated, that's, that's, that's not cool. I'm not looking to lay off those people, but I don't see why those folks couldn't be retrained to reopen the Dutchess County office of consumer affairs. And the only other thing I'll say is, I went to high school, and I graduated Rhinebeck '81, there's, I know a corrections officer at the Dutchess County jail, he lives here in Rhinebeck. He talks about people, corrections officers, being forced all too often to work three days in a row, 16-hour shifts, and for the second, I'm just letting everybody know, for the second year in a row, it's $5 million with overtime at the Dutchess County jail. Now, to have it one year is reprehensible and unconscion. For the second year in a row, $5 million with overtime?
What is the, who's in charge of that?
That is Adrian Budge Anderson.
So what does he say about it?
He says that they're doing something about it, but it's a bunch of gobbledygook.
When's the next budget here, when is the budget going to be passed?
I'm glad you're, I meant to bring that up. So tomorrow, I'm on the budget finance personnel committee, tomorrow at, I guess, 7 o'clock, four Democrats and eight Republicans, 12 of us are gonna be voting. Unless some important changes are made, I'm not gonna be voting yesterday.
What do you mean 12, why 12 are gonna be vote?
Because there's only, out of 25 county legislators, there's 12 members on the county budget finance personnel committee.
When is the budget...
December 7th is the vote, and people can speak that night, also December 4th, Monday December 4th at 7 o'clock, the official annual county budget hearing, Thursday, December 7th at 7 o'clock, is, is, and so people can speak for three minutes at the, at the public hearing on Monday, December 4th at 7 o'clock, and for three minutes, Thursday, December 7th, at 7 o'clock. And I just, also, real briefly, today's Poughkeepsie Journal reminded me of something I've been working on for about a decade, Target, Dollar Tree, these toxic toys, I mean, the fidget spinners with the lead, Westchester, Rothman, Suffolk unanimously banned. Westchester under Rob Astorino unanimously banned toxic toys, and so...
That's something that could be done on a county level?
Yeah, yeah, and it takes an X-ray analyzer, it costs like $35,000, you know, I, because I've been in touch with Albany County Health Department, that is a budget item. And that's about it. We're doing our 21st Repair Cafe, it's gonna be Saturday, December 16th, noon to 4:00 PM in this room, and so if you have clothing...
21st, already for here? Wow, good for you.
And it's really Catholic and ever, I don't fix anything, it's Catholic and ever, it's Chris Louis, it's Dimitri Galli... It's Dimitri Galazini. It's Dave Heller. It's...
Barry Sharra?
Barry Sharra, yes, I'm sorry.
Bob Moyn, someone from the highway department.
Yes, so if you have electrical appliances, lamps, vacuum cleaners, clothing, computers, electronics, lots of times, we have a jewelry expert here. Vince Murray with his welding truck outback, welds stuff. So it's repaircafeheath.org, I'm at 876-2488. Questions, comments, complaints, concerns.
Thanks. Anybody else? I'd like to make a motion to adjourn unless everybody's second, all in favor? Good night, everybody.